Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February 13th. The opening prayer will be given by Pastor Stephen Pfeifer of the First Methodist Church. Please rise.
Could you please sit? Thank you. When we are asked to do something that we know is humanly impossible, it seems that our only options are to refuse to do it, or to appeal for help from a source of power outside of ourselves. I invite you now to appeal to that source, that higher power, that otherness, to help you for the next minute or so. Now think of an enemy of yours. That is, someone or something that you don't get along with, that you feel has slighted, or crossed you, or even betrayed you in some way, that you are alienated from, that doesn't see things the way you do, someone or something that engenders hostility or resistance in you, that blocks your aspirations, that you may even hate, whether it is a person or a thing, in the present or in the past. Now, for the next few moments on this Valentine's Day Eve, I ask you to pray for, or send best wishes or positive thoughts to whatever wording you feel comfortable with, that enemy that you have just identified. In other words, just try to extend your heart to it or to them in some form of love, whether it be a person or a thing, past or present. And as you try to do this, remember to ask for help from that transcendent force, that power outside yourself that we spoke of about earlier. Let's take a few moments, a few brief moments in silence, and then I'll close with thanks. Thank you all for giving this a try, and thanks be to whatever higher powers enabled us to be even a little successful in our brief attempt tonight to love our enemies. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein. Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marrone. Morgenstein, here. Chortel. Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Savoni.
Here. Both Counselor Marrone and Counselor Fishbein are on family vacations, and Counselor Chortel has a work obligation. Before moving the consent agenda, I would just like to note that I will be abstaining from the vote on item 3V.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through X.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes.
Swear again.
We have a whole bunch of appointments tonight, and I am tempted to suggest a recess to give the clerk time to swear all these people in. So let's take a five-plus-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order. Item 4, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item 5, the public question and answer period. Any takers? All right. Nothing for the public question and answer period. Onto item 6.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the donation from Choate Rosemary Hall and approve the appropriation of funds in the amount of $6,500.
Second.
And this is for the Wallingford 350 Jubilee. Moved and seconded. Mayor, I thought we might have a presenter for this item.
I don't see anyone in attendance, but we obviously are very pleased that Choate is supporting the 350 celebration and the committee that's planning that celebration. And the money will be put into an account that will be held for that purpose.
Thank you.
For those who don't know, the 350 celebration is 2020. It celebrates 350 years of Wallingford's existence as a community.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Onto item 7, which is discussion and possible action regarding the police pension contract tentative agreement. Good evening.
Counselors.
Your names for the record, please.
Yes, Jim Hutt, Town Personnel Director, well, Human Resources Director now.
William Wright, Police Chief.
Welcome to both of you. Tell us what we have, what you've negotiated.
The reason why we're here tonight is to seek your approval for a tentative agreement for a successor pension contract with Local 1570 of the police union. The substantive changes include the following. Employee contributions will increase from seven and three-quarters to nine percent over the term of the contract. Eliminates overtime in the final average salary calculation for employees hired on or after ratification. The multiplier decreases from 2.35% to two and a quarter percent for employees hired on or after ratification, duration until June 30th, 2022, and provides for a deferred retirement option plan for employees who collect that option. So I'll take any questions from the council if there are any.
So my perception is that when we get things like an increase in employee contributions, elimination of overtime wages for future hires, a decrease in the multiplier, we've made some gains from the town's perspective.
That's correct.
Okay. And can you tell us a little bit about this DROP plan and how it works?
Sure. The deferred retirement option is becoming pretty standard in the police profession. And how that works is it can range from one to three years. In this particular case, an employee who has met the 22 years of service time to retire can notify the town that they would like to enter the drop program, which what happens is they continue to work as an employee for one to three years, whatever term they decide to elect in the drop. They continue to get paid as a, you know, as a police officer, but their pension is determined and calculated as of the date they decide to enter the drop. So it's at a much smaller figure than it would be if they continued to remain an active employee. Based upon the age of the individual, there's a factor that's determined by the actuary that puts that pension amount, that deferred pension amount, into a record-keeping account that sits, it doesn't earn any interest, it sits in a record-keeping account in the pension plan. And at the end of the drop program, when the employee has to leave under the terms of the contract, they will begin to collect their pension that was calculated at the start of the drop program, and they'll receive an lump-sum payment, those deferred payments to the plan while they work in the drop program. So that's in essence how it works. It's determined actuarially to be cost-neutral to the town.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Laterno.
With this contract, it was obviously negotiated pretty heavily. How was it received by the employees?
I believe that the vote taken by the union was 56 to 1 in favor of this contract. It was 55 or 56 to 1.
And how do you, I know, you know, new hires and bringing new personnel is a challenge to the police department because everybody's shopping for the same officers out there. How do you feel, will this help you attract new officers? Or I know some towns have even have done away with their pensions. So what is your feeling on this?
I believe that maintaining a pension, if you will, and certainly this pension is, which has been bargained, I can't speak for future employees, but the fact that the town still maintains and will maintain a pension is attractive from a recruit's point of view.
Thank you.
Does the, Chief, does the drop allow you the opportunity to do some planning? Is there some other benefit to that that doesn't directly have to do with the pension?
Exactly. So should an employee elect to drop in, it's a great planning tool for me because as Jim has indicated, it's got a timeline and certainly an expiration date, if you will. So I'll know at least what the maximum exposure is for time. They can drop out really at any time within that three-year period, but at least I know what the maximum of three years, what I'm going to be looking at for replacement labor.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure I understand. So if an employee says, I want to do the drop, I want to make an exit plan, is it, it's their option to pick any amount of time they could do it in one year, two years, three years, it's up to them? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So now during that period, if they decide to make a change, are they able to? Are they able to come back and say, you know, I was pretty sure that I was going to be able to exit, but you know, now I might need, I'm two years in, now I might need a couple more years. I thought I could do it in one more year, but I might need a couple more. Do they have the option to extend or anything like that?
No, they don't.
So they're effectively on notice and they're on a countdown timer, and that's the end of it?
That's the whole basis of the drop program, is that they leave. And that's why we have language to that effect. There have been other drops where some employees have attempted to reneg on that, and for whatever reason or another, so we have language that's in the drop plan itself that says at the end of that drop period, there's no exceptions.
Okay. And then you indicated that the pension is frozen. So that, so if, just as an example, they're still effectively an employee, it's just that they're not, there's not any more accrual to their pension, but they would be getting, I presume, raises and things of that nature that were negotiated in during that three, in my example, a three-year period, correct?
That's correct.
And overtime, which is normally a calculation into the pension, doesn't really matter for those individuals because they're no longer calculated. They can work, they can get the time and a half, but it doesn't impact that set rate that's in their pension at that point, correct?
That's correct. Once they go into the drop and they declare they're in the drop plan, their pension is based upon that time prior to going into the drop. So any overtime, any additional pay they make is not going to be added to their pension. Correspondingly, they're not going to be paying any more into the pension fund because they're not accruing any more service time and the town's not accruing any more liability by having them.
Okay. And then just one added question to that, because I'm not completely familiar, Chief, with how you guys do all of your overtime. If it's semblance of what I used to remember, you guys must do it by who had it, who's got the most, you go by seniority, some sort of a list of it, right? And people can refuse until it comes all the way around and based on demand, then you can require someone to do it as if they were scheduled, correct?
It depends on which overtime is in consideration. So we never order, in your example, for extra-duty work, for construction work, nor does that contribute to the pension. In your example, an employee could be ordered to work, should we not be able to find someone to fill the vacancy typically in operations, but it is, it's seniority and hours-based.
Right. So it goes by seniority, goes by who's got the most, and it follows down from there?
Yes.
So I guess my question with that, you don't see a problem slotting overtime? Because, I mean, I'll just use a loose example. I'm retired. Part of the reason why I got into the program is I want to go 36 and I really want to put in my 40 and go. And, you know, so I'm going to kind of refuse all my overtime. If that happens enough, do you think you'll have a short-term staffing issue with respect to overtime? Or is there plenty of other people that are always interested in grabbing it?
Yeah, there's never a shortage of employees interested in the overtime that way.
All right. So that's not presenting a new or, a new problem by dealing with it? All right. I just wanted that for my own justification. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go against this considering that it was basically a landslide acceptance. I just wanted to know for myself. So thank you very much.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Yeah, so help me, I'm not really clear as to why someone would opt for this drop program if they're no longer accruing any interest on their investment. It says it's a choice. Why would you choose not to continue to have your money earned?
Well, it's an option. So they don't have to go into the drop. They could stay and continue to pay into the pension fund and accrue as much time as they want. So it's an option available to them. It's left up to the individual to decide if this is something that they want to do. I can think of an example. A lot of police officers work up to the point where they're fully serviced and they're, you know, they're ready to retire. And they would, you know, they could leave the town of Wallingford and go work for some other town. This could be some type of a retirement option for them where they can continue to work for the town of Wallingford, receive a portion of their pension, remain an employee, and then at the end of that drop period, they could take, they could retire plus take the drop payment with them.
I guess it's different from what I'm used to for my retirement fund, where if I put in more, I'm going to get more at the end. So there comes a point where there's no benefit to them putting in more?
Well, and they're also not contributing more into the pension fund. So that's money that's available to them, it's disposable income to put into, you know, like a 457 plan or, you know, some type of a 401K.
They may put somewhere else. Okay, so it doesn't gain them more. And then with the employee contributions, we're asking them to put in more, which is great. What is the town putting in?
That's based upon the actuarial valuation. I can't remember what the amount is. That's, that's, right now it's 21 point, I think it's 21.4% of payroll the town's contributing.
So it's a variable depending on some interest?
It's based upon what the actuaries says we need to contribute for the year. So what percent of payroll?
In order to get the number to where we need to be. Okay, all right. And can you comment any on, to get this, which does look very favorable, things that we had to do on the other side of things, things they?
Well, without getting into, you know, the bargaining sessions, the town, what I consider to be a benefit to the employee was, was able to discuss with the union and our actuaries a way to make the drop plan work for both parties, where it didn't cost the town any more money, but the employee had that option to, to drop in. So in terms of what the cost to the town, the town did not have to give up any additional multiplier amounts or anything like that in order to achieve the contract.
Thank you.
Counselor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the tentative agreement for a successor pension contract with AFSCME Council for Local 1570.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the council? Any comments or questions from the public? There being none, I bring it back to the council for a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Onto item 8.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a new lease with SNET for use of Water Division-owned land, Young's Apple Orchard Road in North Branford from the Water Division.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, gentlemen. Please remind us who you are for the record.
Rick Hendershot, Director of Public Utilities.
Neil Amway, General Manager for the Water and Sewer Divisions.
Thank you. What have you for us tonight?
I'll quickly introduce it, but I'll let Mr. Amway handle most of our remarks. We're here with a 20-year extension to an existing lease with Southern New England Telephone for land that the Water Division owns in North Branford, on which is sited a tower which holds communications equipment.
Okay. Is this where you do the handoff?
Yeah.
Apparently.
Very clumsily, I might.
So it is a 20-year lease composed of four five-year terms. The annual increase per year is 3% compounded over the 20 years. It would begin October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2039. Over the 20 years, the town would receive $1,340,473.60. In addition to the 12-year lease, that would bring us approximately $1.8 million in revenue. The new lease actually has a, for lack of a better word, a carve-out that for the fire and police or any other town entities, if we were to put an antenna on that cell tower, SNET has agreed to waive the pass-through charge, which is 666.66 per month. I did not pick that rate. That is in the current lease. So over the 20-year term of the lease, that is a savings of $160,000 to the town.
So that antenna provision, does that allow us for the communication system that we're revisiting for police-fire?
Correct. It was specifically put in for that, and it is, it's actually for the town of Wallingford. So we didn't want to limit it strictly to police or fire. We could use it for other entities that we may need in the 20-year extension.
Okay. And you said that the town would receive payments. Doesn't that actually go into the PUC budget, the income from the lease?
Yes, it goes to the Water Division.
Yep.
It's Water Division lands.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Questions, comments from the council? Counselor Laterno.
Neil, I see this is at the Young's Apple Orchard area. Is that, there's a big water tank up there. Is that where this is going to be on the water tank?
No, it's actually in North Branford. You really can't see it from our Pistopog Water Treatment Plant. You can barely see it from Young's Apple Orchard Road in North Branford. It's very difficult to see. It's an, it's an old, classic kind of structure antenna.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was just, I was trying to figure out exactly where it was because I'm familiar with Young's Apple Orchard, and I know there's a big tank up there. I think it's a win-win for the town. It's great. I'd love to have this in my yard and collect that kind of money. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Counselor Zandry.
Thank you. Just a question for me. I, I see the entity as Southern New England Telephone, and I've always understood that that entity is gone. So could you kind of explain to me who that is now?
So it is Frontier. And actually Frontier came back in, the original draft of the lease had Frontier. They came back and asked that it be SNET. That was, we corresponded with the Department of Law to make sure we could go back to SNET. It has to do with their paperwork behind the scenes. And so Jeff Einhorn from the Law Department helped us, and he was, and he was fine with going with SNET. But currently, it is Frontier.
Okay. I mean, I just wanted to know that for myself, and I'm positive that there would be a couple of other people that might ask, you know, if they saw this in the paper and tried to get an understanding of what we're doing. And not that it's a bad thing, we're still getting money. We almost, maybe you don't even care who it's coming from. But I wanted to make sure that I understood it to be Frontier.
And that's an excellent question. I think, you know, it's Frontier. They came back, they asked for it to be SNET. Who uses SNET anymore?
Right.
You know, we all know it from the past, but not currently.
So there, this is, and this is again, a little bit of an extension of that. I didn't realize that Frontier had cellular services. Are they getting back into that program? Is that why they're doing it? Is this just something that they're utilizing on that space?
There are several cellular communications on that site. Frontier is one. T-Mobile and Sprint are also on.
Well, I know a lot of those towers, they kind of like co-locate and they rent from one another and they swap rates and stuff, but I didn't know, like, I know that like Comcast is getting into doing Xfinity-type phones. I guess maybe Frontier is doing the same thing.
Frontier built and owns the tower, and they own the support building at the base.
Okay, so that makes sense. So they want a lease from us so they can continue to lease
Correct.
to their, to their people on their, their equipment. That makes a lot of sense. So I guess my only other question is really ancillary to that. So because this lease money comes into the Water Division, it's because it's Water Division property, it goes into their assets and their retained earnings, and that helps us offset projects that we have to do, they treat it like any other earnings, correct?
Another form of income.
So it goes back into the, into the Water Division for things that they have to do within the system?
Operating capital, whatever they need the funds for.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from counselors? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto item 9, which is discussion and possible action regarding revisions to the town council rules of procedure. We have a draft that was produced after the workshop. And I did receive a call from the Law Department with concerns about one of the changes. And I'm hoping that in a moment, we hear from the Law Department about their concern with the change. It's all right. I tried to drag out my request as long as I could. I tried to drag out my request as long as I could. I think I've run out of breath. Yeah, so there I got a call from Attorney Small about concern with one of the changes in the rules.
Yes. Mike? Mike? Mike?
Microphone?
Her belief, and I think she's correct, is that often there is an item for executive session that doesn't require action thereafter. So she doesn't feel your sentence works on that.
Okay. That's the proposal, to clarify.
Number?
Proposed change to item six, the end of the second paragraph, there will be no catch-all executive session listed without an actual action item contemplated. So that that either needs to be revisited or something like that. Counselor Testa?
I read that I would assume that the objection would have to do with a specific item, and that doesn't seem to be what a catch-all executive session would cover. So this would if I read this, this this does not preclude putting an executive session item on the agenda for a specific discussion about a specific item that doesn't require an action. Am I incorrect?
So the discussion that happened at the workshop was that it referred to the mayor's standing last item on the agenda, which is the executive session pursuant to Section 1, 260 of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property. The intention of that addition to the rules was to preclude that item from being on the agenda unless there is some specific discussion contemplated for that agenda item.
At the time of scheduling the agenda.
Exactly. At 1:00 P. M. on the Tuesday the week before the meeting.
Yeah, I gathered that. I'm thinking the whole idea of a catch-all, describing an executive session item as a catch-all, I still think what I said applies. In other words.
Well, and?
Because you could say, we want to have an item on the agenda for something that doesn't require action, but it's not the same as that particular type of item. So we could still add this, I think, still provide for what Attorney Small was concerned about. That's just logistically absent.
Mayor, you look like you want to be heard.
I guess I'm a little puzzled what the problem is. I mean, the item that is on there is an executive session, which is for the purpose it's written, and sometimes I may not know until moments before a meeting that there's a need for a discussion. I mean, it makes it efficient, it makes it and no one is held in the dark because these are executive sessions. So it's not like a member of the public would have a right to know what we're going to talk about. They just know that the general subject matter is real estate. I think it's efficient, you know? We have the latitude to be able to do that, and it's it's something that's always of interest to all of us when the stars align and it's possible to take action with regard to maybe just forming an opinion about whether we're interested in something or not. Efficient and effective.
I apologize, I wasn't at the workshop where this was discussed, but for the record, I have no problem. I don't like this change. I like the idea of being able to have those discussions. It's just an ongoing thing. They've never proven to be problematic in my mind in any way whatsoever.
Counselor Laffin?
Yes, I Mayor and Counselor Testa, I agree with both of you. And for those that were not in attendance at the workshop, it was expressed by one of the counselors that they wanted to know in advance what those executive sessions might be about so they could decide whether they wanted to leave early or not. That's the basic gist of it. Whether they would be comfortable not staying through the executive session. So I agree with what you've expressed so far, Counselor Testa, and what the mayor has stated is that and sometimes in these real estate things, points in items and events don't occur until the last minute, and we often know that they might be looming or they might occur, they might be impending, and it's important to jump on them when when they occur. And it's it's of no burden to us to find out, as we know tonight, there is nothing for this item, and we won't be staying for it when we find out at the beginning of the meeting.
Chairman Savoni, there's also, according to Attorney Small, a conflict in item six between 20 minutes and 30 minutes, as stated.
That's actually item four, the last pair, the last sentence.
You're right. Sorry about that.
Last sentence of item four, yes. That would need to be corrected. Before I move on, Counselor Morgenstein, you had something.
Yeah, I just my recall of the discussion was that, yes, there was part of the discussion that was if there's going to be an executive session that has a particular topic happening as opposed to an executive session that might be blank and not happen at all, there was a feeling like Counselor Laffin said that, well, if there's no discussion to be had and I'm leaving early or taking the night off or something, I know whether there's a discussion or not. But I think the other piece of that discussion, to my recall, was not only us, but perhaps the public knowing, they're not going to know what the item is, but that in fairness, giving an announcement in the agenda that there is something being discussed as opposed to every single agenda having, well, we might or we might not. And then the other side of managing that was if it needed to be put on and it needed to be put on last minute, there are mechanisms where we can be in contact if a decision needs to be made, such as this week, we needed salt, and we all had to scramble and make that happen.
But that wouldn't be the subject of an executive session.
Right, an executive session wouldn't. But just the fact of being able to have a discussion at the last minute, I'm just trying to recall the clarification of what all was discussed.
I understand that. As it's written, it currently it's on the agenda as item 10 tonight. That is compliant with the F O I rules. One of the reasons why we are allowed to post an executive session on an agenda this way is that quite often the town has the opportunity to negotiate purchases of parcels that haven't otherwise been listed or marketed. And the advantage there is that once the property is listed or marketed, if there is some public notion that the town has an interest in the property, it could enhance the value of the property, it could put the town back on its heels with respect to its negotiation perspective. So that's why that exception exists in the F O I law. Mayor?
And again, it is meant to be an executive session. There's no notice to anyone. I'm sure someone wouldn't come to a meeting because we might have an executive session, which they can know nothing about under the F O I and under our duty to protect the interests of the public. So it's again, I don't think there's any disservice to a person who's attending the meeting. They wouldn't expect to know anything about what's going to happen in an executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. So from a procedural perspective, our rules, these rules as they exist, require that they can only be changed as adopted changed at a regular meeting of the council, and they require a vote of five counselors. At this point, there's not a motion on the table to adopt the rules as proposed. If there is no motion made, then we will continue to operate under the existing rules from the last session, subject to a potential future workshop to address changes. Counselor Laffin?
I am I would like to go through each of the changes and vote on them independently, starting with rule four.
Okay.
So my motion, I guess, would be to amend the rules as accepted in the workshop to change the public and question-answer period from 30 minutes to 20 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Question? I think the the motion was to change the public question and answer.
From here, can you say that again?
Actually, I read this as being public comment on a specific agenda item.
That would be correct. And so can you please withdraw that motion?
Yes, I withdraw that motion, and I would like to remake that motion.
Tom, I need to withdraw my second.
That the public comment on an individual agenda item be changed from 30 minutes to 20 minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And my other point would be, since that would be changed, would not it be prudent to change the following sentence?
Yes.
Just to match?
Correct.
Yes, that's a typo.
Right.
Okay. Because that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
So that should be changed from 30 to 20. Does that require motion?
I think that's the intention of his motion, and the failure to include it was just a typographical error.
Oh, okay. Cool.
Correct.
Counselor Letourneau?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the intention is to go through every one of the redlined and vote on every one of the redlines.
That's what Counselor Laffin's intention is.
Well, you know, we've seemed like we've gone, and the only thing, the sticking point, is the executive session. So what if we if a motion was made to simplify things but to remove that sentence and then vote on the proposal that was presented before us? I mean, otherwise, we're just we're plowing new ground here, and, you know, we'll be here till the wee hours going over this stuff and discussing it.
Well, yeah, I don't think Counselor Laffin's intention is to completely redo the workshop, but I think his intention is to see what of the proposed changes can be saved or not.
Unless anybody else here has an objection to any of the other changes.
Yeah, it's really only like four items. I think I'd rather go through it.
Go through them.
Okay, all right.
And for number four, I'm sorry, because we're talking about a typo. Can you read, Barbara, what that will read? The last sentence? No, the whole the item four, just how the whole thing will read, please.
I can do that for you if you want, Barbara.
Yeah, that would be great.
It should the last sentence should read, "Public comment on each individual agenda item will not exceed 20 minutes. Public comment may exceed 20 minutes at the discretion of the chairman."
Thank you. So these are voting items. This is the exception of public?
It's actually all individual agenda items. Previously, we had
Agenda items.
Previously, the rule had restricted public comment on action items only. The prior council changed the rule to allow public comment on all individual agenda items.
Not exceed 20 minutes, and public may not exceed 20 minutes, may exceed 20 minutes at the discretion. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Counselors, Andrew?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a little question on this, and you'll have to excuse me. I didn't get out of the Boys and Girls Club meeting that night early enough to discuss this item. I guess my question is, why do we need this on an agenda item at all? Basically, what you're saying is, right now, we have the discretion, the chairman has the discretion to we have an item on the agenda, the discussion's going over 30 minutes. You have the ability to shut it down or permit it to continue at will. Why? How often do we do we have a situation where we actually have to end it?
To my recollection, it happens. Is it always? Does it happen every time we have discussion on an individual agenda item? I don't think so, but I think there have been meetings where having the time limit on individual agenda items has been beneficial to allow other business to be discussed and have the meeting not be exceedingly long.
Okay. I and this and this is in no way my questioning your ability or Tom's when he's, you know, in charge. I'm not going to suggest that today you're going to be fussy about it, and tomorrow you guys are going to be more liberal about it. I guess I guess my concern about it is, as I look into a mostly empty room, do we feel like it's going to take away from the public's ability to discuss something of a more critical nature? I mean, obviously, the intent of the discretion is if it's a critical thing like community pool, and everybody wants to talk about it, we're going to let it go on and on. But I guess even that's a good example. Maybe after an hour of discussing something as sensitive as community pool, there may be some desire to move the evening along, and if anybody were to exercise their discretion at that point and say, listen, it's almost like calling the question from the people on the floor because we want to take a vote and move on. I guess I have a concern with that because on that night, a night like that, where a lot of people show up, I would want to hear them all out. I don't care how long I have to be here. I guess I'm asking, why even have this if we're only using it so infrequently, and it's usually only a situation of something of major importance?
I suspect that there is a history behind this rule that predates you and me being on the council. I've seen in other associations, bylaws, similar limitations on times for discussion of items. I've actually seen bylaws for nonprofits where where their meetings aren't necessarily public, but there's guidance for the chairman as to how to move the agenda along in a timely fashion. It's not uncommon, and it's certainly something that's been in our rules, time limitations as long as I've been on the council.
I'm always very hesitant to support something that might even have the specter of limiting public input, because I really feel strongly that's part of why we're here. I guess I guess I'd like to say that I'm going to probably reluctantly support this based on the fact that yourself and Counselor Laffin, when he's had to be in charge, have been pretty good stewards of it. You guys have given a lot of latitude. I guess I guess I'm almost asking, could I come to expect continued behavior in that manner? I mean?
So I can tell you that there certainly have been times where I've extended the public comment period on an individual item based upon a volume of attendance in the room and awareness that the volume in attendance is there because of a particularly sensitive issue. I mean, I remember when the Coalition for a Better Wallingford first got started, and, you know, there were there were a couple of nights that those issues were on the agenda, and we allowed extension extensive discussion periods for that. I think we had we did have a meeting last term where community pool was discussed, and there was a full room, and I don't think anybody was shut down from commenting.
And I didn't mean to suggest that if I came across like
You didn't, and I'm not taking that personally.
Okay. I guess I guess with that, you know, as long as we're really using good discretion with it, I can be comfortable supporting that. So I appreciate the opportunity to kind of question again, because I didn't make that meeting early enough, to find out what our mindset was around that. So thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Laffin?
This it was a motion that actually Counselor Chertel had made on the basis of consistency with the other public question-answer period being 20 minutes versus a 30-minute agenda item. And then and we got into a discussion, and I recalled specifically a couple of meetings that I had run or whatever. And, you know, I recalled one in particular where I allowed three speakers, 45 minutes total, let's say it was about there. And in the in the four years now, it's I don't think we've never not allowed somebody to speak that we're aware of that wanted to speak. It was it became more about the consistency in not allowing one or two people to, well, we have 30 minutes to have the floor as a public question-and-answer. Because there have been agenda items where the public question-and-answer period has actually lasted longer than the counselor's comment period. And that's I think that's been the thing, is that there's been maybe one or two people in the audience that have gotten into debates with the mayor, the administration, the War Department, or whatever. the War Department, or whatever it may be. And we're just trying to kind of keep moving things along. And by setting it at 20 minutes, it gives a little bit of a reminder, and hopefully people, when they come to the microphone, will be a little more mindful, a little more specific, or a little more careful with their time. But as a council, aside from the chairman, we're always allowed to appeal the decision of the chair. If he chooses, no, we're done at 20 minutes, we can all say, nope, hold on.
It happened at the beginning of the discussion of these rules.
Right, right. We would like to continue. And so, there's, there's a lot of catchalls. This is just kind of sending a minimum that, that I had actually not thought of, but as the conversation had gone on, I supported. And, and as you stated, I also don't take anything personally. But that's just, I just wanted to share some of my thoughts on, on where that came from, or why I ended up supporting it in the first place.
All right, I appreciate that.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Yeah, so as the new person up here, I think, Ms. Counselor Letourneau pointed out to me, oh, well, you'll change your mind after you've been here a while. But I think I have to stand by the changing it from 30 to 20 just really doesn't work for me. And I appreciate that we certainly have had times where you go over at your discretion, and that is very much appreciated. I guess one thing that I might ask, just in general, I think people who don't regularly come to meetings would not necessarily have an idea that if there's eight people waiting to talk, or if there's one person that has come up repeatedly to talk, their knowledge at the beginning of having public time on an agenda item, they wouldn't know whether they have 20 minutes or 30 minutes, or whether you're going to give them more. I don't know whether that's something on a busy night that is worth, you know, pointing out, you know, just as far as be concise, and this is how much time we tend to grant. Just a thought, but yeah, appreciate it always when, if there's a lot of comment, people are allowed to proceed. But yes, succinctly is best. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on this one, please?
Thank you. Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Next change was.
The 12:30 change on Tuesday.
That's item six.
Yes.
I mean, Roman numeral six. It's the third line in changing the, all right, I'm sorry, do you want to move that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we change the time in line three from noon to 12:30 of Tuesday. This would be regarding the item to be placed on the agenda. Counselors wanted an additional half hour.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Onto the, will somebody move the catch-all language?
What did we decide to do with it?
I don't like it either.
Okay, then, if, if nobody moves that, then that will fall away. Item 10.
Oh, you're absolute.
So, somebody will have to move it. My reaction to that is, and this was Counselor Marone's, and he does feel that it's important to regularly discuss, discuss the budget. You know, I think if you review the financial report, and you have questions on the financial report, then you ask for an agenda item. You know, I don't think there's a need for a once-a-month standing item. If there's no, if we get here, and we have this item on the agenda, and nobody has any questions on the report, then, then it didn't need to be on the agenda.
Morgenstein.
So, if somebody wants to move it, that's fine.
I will have one comment. At my own peril. We may not have anything to say about it, but given that we're going to allow public comment of 20 minutes on any agenda item, just opening the door for somebody standing up at the first meeting every month, and I'm all for public comment, you know that, but you also know that there are people that will, that will abuse this, and will use this as an opportunity to just drag on a meeting for 20 minutes to talk about the financial report, when there really is nothing on there of, of import. I should say, it's all of import, you know what I'm talking about. There's nothing different. It's a regular report. I don't like having this on here.
Counselor Morgenstein.
So, not having been on multiple months, is a monthly financial report tending to be a lot of extensive numbers, or is it more of a summary?
No, we get the entire financial report. I think it's 100 pages, and there are, if you get to the last page, there are some summations. But, no, it's, we get a detailed monthly report.
And is there any way to ask the comptroller to give us a summary? Something more concise?
That's not something we could put in our rules.
Right.
But, Mayor?
Something we could read.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at whether a summary's possible, but I'm just going to tell you, a summary is just that. It will be very difficult to garner much real substance from a summary.
But as we go along, month to month, and then come up to the end of the year, have, because I think it was Counselor Marone that was putting this on?
Yes.
His intent was, if we have a better sense of what we're seeing as the year goes along, again, it sounds like the rules is separate from what we get, but.
No, but, but just hear me out. Every month, you're getting a report that shows line by line where the budget is and where the expenditures are. A summary won't contain that information. A summary would be a, a summary of an entire department's budget, and there's, there's what they were given in the budget, and here's where they are in expenditures. It won't break it out by line item, because you already received that, and that's all the detail. That's why I'm just saying, you know, I can talk with a comptroller. I'm sure it can be done, but the amount of information left out in a summary is significant.
Right, but the point being, if we know three months before the year is going to end, that we spend two-thirds less on pencils, then as we're planning forward, you know, seeing trends, seeing what's happening within departments. I mean, certainly their flat costs, their personnel costs, these are things that don't change, but detailed what we're spent, because we come to the budget season in April going, well, could we have done less, more, this, that, but we haven't seen the year of what's going on?
But you do get the year.
I, I, so I'm trying to understand.
Monthly, you get line by line what the experience has been in a department. A summary of that department will be a gross number. It will include all of those line items in one number. So it, it will be very difficult to use that in a meaningful way. Whereas if you look at the monthly report, that will tell you in the office expenses, in salaries, in the variety of outside help, that will tell you exactly where they are in the course of the year as compared to what was budgeted. So a summary, you are receiving a summary, actually. It's not telling you all the individual expenses. It's telling you month by month cumulative, cumulatively, how much has been spent on a given item number. A summary would be the whole department budget. Say it's $1 million, and halfway through the year, 47% or, or 55% or 60% has been spent out of that total. It, it, it won't tell you any detail. Then you turn to the same thing you've received every month to be able to see what the details are.
Counselor Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things on the, the monthly report. Over time, I've, I've looked at every monthly report and gone over it, and if, if a counselor has a question on a, on an item, what I do is, I don't know how the others do it, but I'll call the department head and discuss it with him. And if I get a satisfactory answer, that, that leaves it right there. If you don't get a satisfactory answer, then you can put it on the agenda and discuss it, bring him in front of us, and we'll all discuss it with him. So that's, that's one thing. And I do agree with the mayor that a summary report is just, that's what it's going to be. It's going to be the summary of, of all of those figures, and it's not going to be all the information that I think everybody's looking for. But that report is also, to the public's, on the public side of it, that report is also available in the town clerk's office. So somebody could go into the town clerk's office, take a look at it, and do the same thing that we do. They could go through, and if they had a question, they could call a department head, some people do. Or if they saw something in there, they could always, during public question and answer, come up to public question and answer, and, and maybe ask the mayor, what's going on with line four, or, you know, whatever, whatever their question happens to be. So, you know, I don't see a need for this. I think there's enough in play already to, that covers all of this. The public is covered, the council is covered, and, you know, I, I agree with, with Counselor Testa, that I think it's going to open a door for every month, for a lot of time being taken on something that really doesn't need to be, that there's other ways to get answers. And I just, I'm afraid of the abuse. That's what I'm afraid of. So, I'm going to, if it comes up for a vote, I will vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. I'm, in, in light of what Counselor Morgenstein has said, I can, and I don't, tonight is not the night to, to discuss changing the monthly report. But what I, what I was thinking of is perhaps, rather than a summary, because the report is, here it is, here's the, and every, every department, month by month, I think what we're trying, what we're trying to perhaps be aware of is, when there's something out of the ordinary, like, let's, for example, if it's June, or whatever, if it's six months into the year, then one could reasonably expect the report would show we've spent about 50% of the budget. So let's say we set, for lack of a better term, a margin of error, where if any line item is performing a plus or minus whatever, 20%, call it, you know, something that deserves to be flagged. Well, you know, this department is, we're 50% into the year, and it's only spent 10%. Or it's 80%. Maybe that, there could be like a one-page alert, for lack of a better term, an alert summary, where there's, these are the only line, these particular line items are kind of performing out of line. You know what I mean? So then, when we're three months from budget, we could say, oh, these are the kind of, these are the, the five, or six, or eight, or 10 line items that aren't following what we'd normally expect them to follow. We could just sort of zero in on those. And that's something we should discuss at a later date, but maybe we can alter the monthly report in that fashion. And that might be, I'm guessing, the kind of summary that might address what your concerns were.
Trending.
Trend, thank you, that's the word I was looking for.
One at a time, please.
Are we not trending? And I'm sure Jim could set a little program up to do that.
Almost nothing, other than salary, is going to go on that basis. So many expenses are seasonal.
Well, that might be the answer.
Now, what, literally, what, what you find out when things are out of whack is when we come in for transfers.
Mm-hmm.
So you're alerted every time there's a problem in a line, because more money is needed in that line, and we come in and seek a transfer.
Well, we're not aware of one when, when they're not spending any of it. So maybe that's the type of thing we're talking about.
But that, that could be a seasonal.
Well, then that could be the simple answer. Why is this one at 20%, 80% into the year? And the simple answer is, we spent all that money next month on an annual basis. And we're all just like, okay. In other words, we're just looking for maybe things that can draw our attention and ask the question, and get a simple answer. I was trying to address your, your concern.
Yeah.
It's an idea.
But literally, I mean, when you look at the mechanics of it, that is what happens with a transfer. You don't have enough money in an account, and the reasons are given, and money is moved from another account, and the questions are asked, well, why is there money there? And the questions are answered, and that basically is the mechanism for dealing with shortages. Now, if we really saw that we weren't receiving revenues we expected, or anything like that, which this wouldn't show, well, we would be alerting to you, we need to appropriate funds, we need to act, because that's the function on the administrative side, to see that the services can be offered on a timely basis, and we can fulfill the purposes of local government. I mean, we can, we can, I'll talk to Jim, and we can talk about what summary might be helpful. But again, trying to, I, I'm not sure, again, when we have a problem, we're usually here for an appropriation or a transfer.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So part of what I wanted just got answered. I mean, basically, there are some expenditures that we allocate for a given line item that sit for a long period of time, then suddenly get used at 90% because we make the purchase or do whatever it is. So I kind of understand that, that outline there. So even if this provision here disappeared, we didn't enact it, any one of us could effectively do it every single month anyway. We could just send you an email and say, hey, let's toss it on, I just want to have a conversation. So I think not having it here doesn't affect any of us from doing it if we want to at will. And I kind of go along with Counselor Letourneau's points. I mean, the first place to go is wherever the budget sits, kind of try to figure out what you don't like about it, and then maybe go to, you could even take it an additional step before we bring it here for a conversation, go talk to the comptroller and say, listen, I had a talk with the department head, they kind of gave me an explanation why. I didn't really follow it, but he seemed like he was pretty genuine about it, he or she. So can you explain it to me a little bit better before I make a bigger deal out of it than it is, and maybe the answer gets done there? But I, I think to have this as a set meeting, I got to agree with Counselor Testa's point earlier, now you've got that item that can be discussed, 20 minutes, once a month, plus some, and is not necessarily needed if the answers are already present. So I mean, I, I probably won't support this if it comes to a vote. So, thank you.
Yep, anyone else? So nobody moved this one?
No.
Okay. If nobody's going to move it, we'll move along. And the last proposed change was to item 14, was to change the procedure for counselors removing items from the consent agenda. This was Counselor Chertel's motion. Told us a story about a week where he had been away, didn't look at his agenda until Saturday at the airport, and wanted to move something off of consent, and was probably about 18 hours too late at that point. So, and then, he, he moved for the Monday morning, 9:30 a.m., change from Friday at 4:30 p.m., and the deletion, was that separately moved?
Yes.
Deletion, the deletion of all that language was separately moved. So does anybody want to adopt either change?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Monday morning, 9:30 rule.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? All right. And then there's the deletion for the encouragement of discussion with a department head. Is there anyone who is willing to adopt that deletion?
Where, where are you here?
The rest of the road.
Do you have the red line? Yeah, so all that language that was deleted?
Just the whole paragraph, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that, that the deleted items be accepted.
So you're moving to, to accept the deletion as proposed?
Yes.
And that's to, to rule 14?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Laffin?
I think it's good the way it was, because it's, it's our own little agreement among counselors that we're going to, in writing. counselors that we're going to, in writing, make an effort to reach out and ask questions necessary, and not waste the world's time in a council meeting. And there are times where it's appropriate that questions be asked or answers be given in a public format setting. But a lot of times, what had happened in the past is that, out of laziness or showboating, I felt counselors weren't doing due diligence before they put an agenda item on, or didn't remove an item from the consent agenda. So, I think it's fair to put on to say, of course, and, and this is a consideration, if you're removing from, an item from the consent agenda, when appropriate, you will remove that item. This isn't to say, when there, there are counselors that have had to remove items because of abstentions, or, as Counselor Zandry, we cited you, you've, you've sent a message saying that you had a statement or whatever, you did not need anybody in attendance, it was taken care of, that's different, that's not what this is. This is covering what, what you have practiced, and that was cited at the workshop. So, I think it's good to leave in as it is, and it, it gives all the counselors, all nine of us, a pause to make sure that we're just thinking it through and asking necessary questions before bringing an administrator or a team of administrators forward to ask a question that might have been answered over a telephone call, that the other eight people already knew or understood, or didn't have a problem with.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the council? Counselor Letourneau?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but I read the wrong, I, I would like to withdraw my motion, because I read the wrong paragraph, red line paragraph.
Okay.
I guess I'll take away my second.
All right, motion withdrawn, second withdrawn. If nobody is going to adopt this change, then it fails, and we can move on the agenda.
So, I just...
Counselor Zandry?
Just, just to make sure that I'm clear, at this point, this is struck, but if we don't adopt it, it'll go back, right?
Right.
Right. Yeah, all right, because I, I kind of agree with Counselor Laffin. I mean, it's really just like level set, hey, you know, these are your, this is kind of your responsibility before we pull it. I mean, and it still gives us the ability to say, listen, I want this item removed, otherwise I'm going to have to vote no on the entire consent agenda, because I wasn't in attendance, or there's a bid waiver here that I don't like, and I don't want to dump the whole thing. So, this is just basically kind of putting, it, it's a rule for us to go do the due diligence, which I don't think's a bad thing, it's a reminder almost. So, I, I'm, I'm good with leaving it in there. Thank you.
Okay, so we do not have a motion on that item. We have adopted changes to the rules, and if there's nothing further, we will go on to executive sessions for both items 10 and 11.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to, to vote on the rules?
We just did. Individually. Yeah, we did it.
You did it individually?
Yes.
So, okay.
It overall becomes an adoption based on the way we voted.
Good, okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there are no items for executive session.
Actually, there are items.
For number 10?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, there are.
Oh, okay. You changed your mind. You told me you were going to text me if you changed your mind.
It was a head fake.
All right, let's go. I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections 1-206D with respect to purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property, and Sections 1-225F and 1-206B of the Connecticut General Statutes regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending tax appeal matter of J. Gavin Properties LLC versus the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Kindly, please, clear the council chambers. Call the meeting back to orders. There are motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I declare the council back in public session. Is there a motion on item 12?
Mr. Chairman, they move we authorize a settlement in the pending tax appeal matter of J. Gavin Properties LLC versus Board of Assessment Appeals, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.